I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, united here in this world with liberty, justice, and law.
Ms. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman DiMaria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Ms. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Hellman.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Seabird.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Alonso.
Here.
Ms. Maddick.
Here.
Thank you. Are there additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are to the consent agenda a personnel application.
And we have spotlights and announcements?
Yes, we did.
Ms. Radford, you up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. McGurk. Greetings, members of the board and all of our guests that are here with us tonight. I'm very honored to be able to stand before you with some spotlights that we would like to highlight. So I would like to begin with some students, two groups of students from Metz Middle School. First of all, I will have a little bit of assistance from some of our staff members. Darlene Dawson is the orchestra and guitar teacher at Metz, and she's here tonight with a few of her students to share information about some of their recent honors. So Ms. Dawson.
It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you tonight about our wonderful kids, and I have some of them here with me if they'd like to come and join me so I don't feel so lonely. Ryan Harrison, Mika Olson, DJ Holzclaw, Ashley Hall, Mason Dayton, and Maddie Kiefer are representatives who were able to come tonight. You know, school let out yesterday, so they've, you know, scattered, but these were able to come and help me out. It really has been just a fabulous year in the music department at Metz, and I'm so very honored and proud to have these few standing here with me tonight to represent everything that they've done. All the way back to November, Ms. Ashley Hall, right here, was our regional orchestra representative of very difficult, very highly competitive audition, and Ashley was able to go and work with famous composer and conductor Brian Balmages for two days and present a concert on the Saturday. So she was our regional orchestra student. Congratulations, Ashley. Awesome. And then in March, the Metz Orchestra performed at the Virginia District Nine State Assessment that we do annually and received straight superiors from the panel of four judges. So that was a fabulous accomplishment. Congratulations, Assessment Orchestra. Thank you. And then finally, in May, we were able to do the Kings Dominion Music Festival on May the 20th. The day started out with a flat tire on 95 on one of our buses, so that was fun. But after we recovered from all of that, they just did a stellar job. The guitar ensemble performed and received a superior, and the orchestra performed and received three straight superiors, and for the first time ever in my 34 years of doing this, one of the judges actually scored us at a 100. That has never happened before. So they received grand champion, first place, Superior Orchestra.
I want to know why it took you 34 years to get one of those, don't you?
I don't know. I might have to work 34 more to figure that out.
I would blow it on top if I were you.
I think that's a good idea, Ms. DiMaria. I think I might take that advice.
Okay.
All right. Well done, guys. Thank you.
Wait, wait.
We'll wait on them. They're coming. You represent the rest of the group.
Yeah, wait for us.
Okay, here we go. Ready, one, two, three. We'll do one more. One, two, three. Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you. You all can stay for the next group of students. You can stay here.
Oh, maybe we can.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So additionally, from Metz Middle School, we have the Director of Bands, Bill Stevens. He's here tonight with a few of his students to talk about some of their recent honors. Mr. Stevens.
Well, thank you for inviting me here, Dr. McGurk, Mr. DiMaria, and the board. I love bragging about our kids, and as you can see, Metz has been doing a lot of good things. First, I want to go ahead and inform you, this year we had about 90 percent of our students who auditioned for our all District Nine, students that tried for our District Underband, made it. This year, we had, I think, eight students. One made alternate and one did not make it, and everybody else made considerable lengths in being one of the leaders in that group. Tonight, I want to go ahead and recognize a few of those people. Some of them aren't here, unfortunately. Kyle Salsedo on trombone, Madeline Gabowski on trumpet, Darren Elkins on French horn, Ben Negro on trumpet. Who is this? Oh, David Smith, who is here, and I want him to come on up. So, and then we had Maria Seabird made first alternate on mallets. So that's one of our persons. We have also had a stellar year, probably not quite as amazing as the orchestra. I look to Ms. Dawson every single day as being a great teacher. But we had two groups that went competing at Kings Dominion, and that group was our jazz band, and that jazz band made a first place over at Kings Dominion. And we also went to Bush Gardens where we had a concert group and also received a first place as well. So ladies and gentlemen, we just have a great group of students over at Metz, and thank you for inviting us.
All right, congratulations, Metz students. Yes. Thank you. Okay. So next, I would like to introduce a group that has been presenting all across the community at civic organizations and making us proud, and Dr. McGurk was so impressed with the work that they've been doing that we thought that we would allow them to come and share some of that information with you tonight. So I would like to present Ms. Tricia Vamosi, an English teacher from Osborne, and she's here tonight to share about the exciting things that have been happening in the Eagle Writing Center.
Good evening. My name is David Garcia, and I'm a tutor at the Osborne High School Eagle Writing Center. The Eagle Writing Center has been up and running for two school years now, and in that time, it has definitely made its mark within the school's hallways. From a couple of sessions a week in a gloomy computer lab to entire remediation sessions and group sessions in our very own classroom, the Writing Center has definitely made a rise. I've been a tutor since the beginning, and getting to see this idea unfold into reality has been a life-changing journey. The experience I gain with each session never fails to aid me in the next. Our skills as tutors have developed and evolved constantly, especially with conferences like CAPTA, the Capital Area Peer Tutoring Association. At this conference, we, the tutors, have a chance to exchange and learn new skills and ideas from other school centers in the area and beyond. And just like the tutors grew to be a family, the center formed a part of Osborne's family by attracting the students' and teachers' attention and keeping them. Events like Promotion Week, where we use miniature writing competitions like Odes for Oreos and Limericks for Lollipops, are how we get the students' attention and keep them as well. We also have open mics and literature events such as The Lounge and Muse that prove that the Eagle Writing Center is much more than just a writing center. It's a place where students can come in and get the help that they need in a nurturing environment, and aside from that, it is also a place that keeps the artistic and literary aspect of the school alive. The importance of such a resource proves itself in our results in these last two years. But numbers and charts aside, the real evidence can be seen in the students and tutors themselves. Thanks to the tireless work and sacrifices by Ms. Vamosi, Ms. Mazerow, Mrs. Kresge, and the tutors, writing and literature is very much alive in Osborne High School. Up next is another Eagle Writing Center tutor, Rebecca Visger, to explain some of these accomplishments.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Visger, and this is also my second year as an Eagle Writing Center tutor. Having been a tutor since Ms. Vamosi finalized the very first group of tutors, opened the Writing Center in January of last year, it has been an incredible journey to get to where I am standing before you. We have progressed so much since those first six months, from dating seven tutors to completing nearly double the amount of tutoring sessions. I am proud to present to you this year's data breakdown. From the day we opened this year, November 31st, to the end of the first semester, January 23rd, we conducted 579 face-to-face and online tutoring sessions. Eighty-seven of those two sessions were for the SOL remediation, in which, with the aid of Ms. Kresge, we tutored students who had failed the English Writing SOL, tutoring for the Writing SOL, as well as the workies assessment. We also had many Eagle blocks of Writing Center classes where retired classes, often avid in foundations of art, would come in and work with the individual tutors on their assignments. Tutors would often bring in each block of that class they had and would bring them in during each stage of the writing process, first draft to final draft, until the work was complete. Tutors would often work with many students at a time to ensure each student had a tutor to turn to and encourage collaboration. This practice continued into the second semester and greatly boosted our numbers. In the second semester, January 30th to June 12th, we completed 225 tutoring sessions in total, which did not include the 108 SOL remediation sessions. These second semester remediations mostly focused on preparing average juniors for the upcoming Writing SOL in March. These students were selected for remediation based off teacher recommendation and their eighth grade Writing SOL scores. For approximately three weeks in six large groups, juniors would rotate through the Writing Center and workshops conducted by English teachers going over anything and everything these students may need to know. During this process, tutors would work with multiple students at a time to teach critical essay writing skills such as organization, grammar, thesis writing. However, not all of these sessions were done face-to-face. Over most semesters, we conducted 62 online sessions, in which students sat in work online via Google Docs in Tutor Writing Center for tutors to comment on. This method is great for the busy student who does not have time to visit the Center in person, or for those who are too anxious to work with Tutor in person. Overall, in the nine months we opened in 2016 to 2017 school year, we completed 979 tutoring sessions. Quick note, that slide isn't accurate. It's 979. It is...yeah, there we go. As compared to the previous 2015-2016 school year, where we were open for six months and completed 552 sessions, we hope next year to complete between 2,500 and 3,000 sessions to continue our mission of ever improving the learning environment of the Osborne High School with the help of our many upcoming tutors. And now from Ms. Vamosi.
Now from Gladys.
Oh, Gladys.
Take it away, Gladys. Good evening. I'm Gladys Gonzalez, a rising senior and again a second-year Eagle Writing Center tutor. I'm going to talk more about numbers, so I'd like to take a moment to share the data from the previous school year. There were several purposes for the Eagle Writing Center. The main purpose was to provide time, space, and staff for both face-to-face and online student tutoring and all aspects of the writing process. The Eagle Writing Center was to play an important role in our school improvement plan as one of our actions and strategies or interventions for increasing our overall performance on the spring Writing SOL by at least 2 percent and as a means to increase our pass rate by at least 5 percent in our two lowest performing subgroups. Our overall score on the Writing SOL rose from 80 percent to 82 percent. Our limited English proficient students rose 4 percent, which is 5 percent above the state average, and our students with disabilities subgroup rose 19 percent, leaving it 13 percent above the state average. In addition to helping increase our spring SOL scores, the Eagle Writing Center played a significant role in 40 seniors passing the alternate workies test, which meant they could graduate on time. Thanks to the MCPSEF grant, we were able to successfully implement a center where students could receive support they need to improve their writing skills. Student leaders could be grown, and staff and students could collaborate on ways to better nourish writers and writing at Osborne High School. We do not have the final scores of this year's Writing SOL, but we are hoping that their scores have improved even more based off of the additional remediation. The EWC isn't just for students struggling with English, however. We also sponsor events that outlet even up to the final stage of writing, which is publishing, such as the Muse Writers Conference and The Lounge, which is a coffeehouse style where students can go and perform various genres of literature. In the past two years, we've also been able to chart the growth of the Writing Center. In our inaugural year with 11 tutors, we completed 501 face-to-face tutoring sessions over the span of six months. In our second year, we had 18 tutors and completed 979 sessions over nine months. So our projected goals for next year is that we're going to have anywhere between 30 to 40 Writing Center tutors and complete anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 sessions over the time of nine months. Within the tutoring sessions, not only do students walk away feeling more confident with their writing skills, but many feel more motivated towards schoolwork in general because of the unique relationship created and time shared when receiving help from their peers, like kids their own age. Oftentimes, students that teachers tend to have a hard time getting to focus on school come back to the center just to get help from one specific person. Speaking from experience, there have been students that teachers tell me, you know, be patient with them or, you know, try to get through to them, but they end up actually leaving the session asking when they can come back next for a different assignment. Tutoring has not only benefited the students we assist, but also the tutors. Now that we have a formal class at Osborne, we're able to be trained with communication skills and effective teaching methods. It's also no surprise that teaching is the ultimate demonstration of mastery in subjects, and given the opportunity for me to teach writing has also allowed me to hone my own craft in a way that I wouldn't have otherwise had the opportunity if it had not been for the Writing Center. So now from Ms. Vamosi.
We're all going to talk.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Gladys. I am Ms. Vamosi, the Eagle Writing Center Director, as well as the web curator for the Capital Area Peer Tutoring Association's Board. Although my tutors have already explained many of the center's accomplishments over the past two years, we wholeheartedly plan on continuing the development of the center at Osborne. One of the primary goals for the 2017-2018 school year is to create more opportunities for the students to utilize the center. During our first year, the tutors were only available during the study hall time, Eagle Block, and this year, their availability expanded to their instructional blocks, B3 and G2. However, due to the increase in number of tutors, we will have the Writing Center available to students and teachers during Eagle Block, all of their lunches, which would be the two classes, after school once a week, as well as Saturday Learning Seminar. By making the Writing Center more accessible to students, we hope that the number of students we can support through one-on-one tutoring will increase. The Writing Center also has endeavors to create a strong online presence that will benefit both the center and the teachers at Osborne. Similar to many other Writing Centers, after creating a website, we would like to populate it with tutor-created handouts and videos to act as supplementary materials for tutoring sessions or in teachers' lesson plans. The tutors would also blog about center events, course readings, and tutoring pedagogy. While the website is being developed, the tutors will also be trained on how to hold online tutoring sessions, both synchronous and asynchronous. Our new online signup form allows students to hold secure time and space to work on writing assignments while communicating through audio or video, so they could literally watch each other edit the same document at the same time. By having sessions available online, students would be able to spend less time traveling to the center and more time working on improving their writing. We also plan on expanding our networking beyond Manassas City Public Schools in order to improve tutor training and curriculum development. In the past, many of the tutors have attended the Capital Area Peer Tutoring Association's annual conference, by which David will actually be presenting this year at, to learn from many other centers in the area. However, as the organization has developed, they have opened some other opportunities for the tutors and directors to participate in professional development. For instance, this summer, they have organized a retreat for directors and tutors to meet with other schools in order to share ideas and plan for the upcoming school year. Gladys, Rebecca, and I will be attending this event. And as I already said, David will be presenting at the conference, and I will also be presenting at the conference this December. We also plan on reaching out to college Writing Centers to pull guest speakers or to plan field trips for observations. These are only a few of the many goals we have planned, and we could probably talk hours upon hours about the Writing Center. And I want to end with a quote by one of the staple texts in our Writing Center curriculum. It's Stephen North's "The Idea of a Writing Center." He succinctly describes the ultimate goal of a Writing Center. "In a Writing Center, the object is to make sure that writers, and not necessarily their texts, are what gets changed by the instruction. Our job is to produce better writers, not better writing." I want to thank you immensely for taking the time to hear some of our accomplishments and for providing my tutors and me the opportunity to work towards these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank the students especially, and, you know, I know you felt a little uncomfortable talking about the numbers, but it was a wonderful business presentation. So the integration of the writing skills you did in preparing the script, pulling together the PowerPoint slides to back it up, that is a lifelong learning skill you will use when you go out and, you know, actually go get a job. So wonderful actual application of what you're doing to help other students and also how you're helping yourselves. So great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The enthusiasm, yours especial. That's what it's all about, you know? And David, you said something, I tried to write it down, but numbers and charts were one thing, but you could see it in the students. We've got to get our SOLs up, my God, we've got to get our SOLs up, but I'd rather see it in the students. And what you said really resonated with me, and so it's great that we're making an impact on these kids. Hopefully, it'll help their SOLs too, but I'd rather make an impact on these kids, and you guys doing that as peers is just wonderful. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you get to picture with us.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Do you want to come to the center so that we can see?
Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Everybody looks great. One, two, three. Okay, good. Thank you. Amazing job. Thank you.
Do we have instructions?
You can remain, please. Thank you. Oh, let me get that over there. Sorry. Oh, geez. Oh, can you minimize it? Oh, it's not on. Never mind. I'll come back to that. Okay. Can you minimize it? No? Okay. Well, I'll just turn on the keyboard and do it in a minute. Okay. All right, so we have staff recognitions that we would like to do at this time. First, we'd like to begin with the Washington Post Teacher of the Year. The Washington Post Teacher of the Year program was established to recognize teachers who exemplify excellence in their profession. According to the Post, the goals of the award are to recognize excellence in teaching, to encourage creative and quality instruction, and to contribute in a substantive way to the improvement of education in the Washington metropolitan area. Teachers must first be nominated, and one finalist is selected by their local school system. The teachers must instill in students a desire to learn and achieve, understand the individual needs of students, encourage their talents, and foster their self-esteem, demonstrate a thorough knowledge of subject matter and the ability to share it effectively with students, foster cooperative relationships with their colleagues and the community, and demonstrate outstanding leadership. Sounds like some of our Writing Center peers to me. I'm honored to introduce our nominees for this year's Washington Post Teacher of the Year Award. From Baldwin Elementary School, autism teacher Jennifer Masinski. Masinski. Okay. From Round Elementary School, third-grade teacher Susan Murphy. From Weems Elementary School, third-grade teacher Megan Butler. Mayfield Intermediate School, fifth-grade teacher Megan McNulty. Fifth-grade teacher, I mean math teacher from Metz Middle School, Randolph Cipio. And English teacher from Osborne High School, Tracy Mazerow. Okay. So now allow me to present the 2017 Washington Post Teacher of the Year from Manassas City Public Schools, Ms. Amy Keen. Ms. Keen is a second-grade teacher at Jenny Dean Elementary School. She received many commendations from parents and colleagues regarding her selection as this year's Washington Post Teacher of the Year. Here's what a few people had to say. Every now and again, a teacher comes along that impacts your life and changes your path for the better. Amy Keen has been that person to all three of my children. Mrs. Keen has always been a role model for me, from her professionalism to her undying love for her students. Mrs. Keen is a master at her content, a master at her pedagogy, I can't say that word too well, and a master at building relationships. Mrs. Keen's profile has been featured in the Washington Post along with educators hailing from 17 other public school systems in DC, eight counties in Maryland, and 10 cities and counties in northern Virginia. On behalf of Manassas City Public Schools, we say congratulations to you, Ms. Keen, and to you also, Mr. Cipio. I would like to note that they were recognized at the Evening with the Stars recently, so we were excited to have them here so we could share publicly with our community the great work that they've been doing. Next, we would like to acknowledge the nominees for the Mary V. Bukavars Virginia Teacher of the Year Award. The Virginia Teacher of the Year Award program honors teachers pre-kindergarten through grade 12, including school librarians and school counselors who represent the best in teaching in the state and the nation. The award is named in honor of Dr. Mary V. Bukavars, the 1989 Virginia and national Teacher of the Year. To receive nomination for this award, teachers should inspire students of all backgrounds in the ability to learn, have the respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues, play an active and useful role in the community, be poised and articulate, and possess the energy to withstand a taxing schedule. We believe each of the nominees fits that description, so we have a few familiar faces from this award. I think some of them couldn't be here tonight. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, Deborah Smith, an early childhood special ed teacher. Second-grade teacher at Round, Jan Schultz. Third-grade teacher from Weems Elementary School, Megan Butler. Math teacher from Metz Middle School, Mr. Cipio, Randolph Cipio. Yes? Okay. And ESOL teacher at Osborne High School, Luis Diaz. Oh, he's going to come back up? Yeah. That's good. That's fine. And the 2018 Mary V. Bukavars Virginia Teacher of the Year for Manassas City Public Schools is Susan Mayo. I would let you guess what school she represents in that blue, so I'll just tell you. She's a STEM coach at Baldwin Elementary School, and I'd like to share a few tidbits about her with you. All of Susan's STEM lessons and the lessons she helps teachers plan contain innovation, problem-solving, technology, and 21st century skills. She provides support and guidance when necessary, but is a firm believer in teachers navigating their own path and developing into their own person through trial and error and making mistakes. We congratulate Ms. Mayo. She will compete with winners from other public schools in Region Four, including Prince William County, Fairfax County, Loudoun County, and Manassas Park City Schools, in addition to a few others, in the hopes of being selected to go on to compete with the other regional winners across the state for the distinguished title. Congratulations to you. Our next recognitions are for the Manassas City Public Schools 2017 Support Employee Excellence Awards. Our support employees are certainly vital to our success. They are essential to the teaching and learning efforts of Manassas City Public Schools. The following employees were selected to represent their respective locations as Support Employee of the Year. From Support Services, our Transportation Division, Jack Souther, dispatcher. From the Central Office, our Application Support Specialist in Information Technology, Deborah Nash. From our Maintenance Department, Maintenance Two Carpenter, Joe Kazool. From Round Elementary School, Administrative Secretary Shayna Richard. From Weems Elementary School, School Administrative Associate Juan Kelly Sheldon. From Hayden Elementary School- They are essential to the teaching and learning efforts of the Manassas City Public Schools. The following employees were selected to represent their respective locations as Support Employee of the Year. From Support Services, our Transportation Division, Jack Suther, dispatcher. From the Central Office, our Application Support Specialist in Information Technology, Deborah Nash. From our Maintenance Department, Maintenance Two Carpenter, um, Joe Kaisel. From Round Elementary School, Administrative Secretary Shayna Richet. From Weems Elementary School, School Administrative Associate Juan Kelly Sheldon. From Hayden Elementary School, excuse me, I know she said she couldn't be here tonight, excuse me. Uh, from Jenny Dean Elementary School, Kindergarten Instructional Assistant Robin Parker. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Instruction, uh, Physical Education Instructional Assistant, John Frank. From Metz Middle School, Custodian Darrell Olden. And from, uh, Osborne High School, Technology Support Specialist Chris Steinbach. The Two Thousand Seventeen Support Employee Excellence Award recipient for Manassas City Public Schools is Michelle McKenzie from Baldwin Elementary School. Mrs. McKenzie is steadfast in her commitment to student and staff safety. In the spring of twenty fifteen, she volunteered to attend training on reunification, the process of re-unifying parents with their children in the aftermath of an emergency. Upon her return, she developed a school plan and provided school-wide training to the Baldwin staff. She presented the process to the Division Safety Committee in the spring of twenty sixteen. In the fall of twenty sixteen, she hosted a division-wide reunification drill to simulate the reunification process. Because of her relentless pursuit of school safety, our students and staff are operating in a system that has best practice protocols at the ready. Congratulations to you, thank you. Thanks, all of you, thank you. Thank you. And finally tonight, we would like to thank and recognize our Twenty Seventeen MCPS retirees. Um, I always say this is a bittersweet moment for us because we hate having to say goodbye to our fabulous staff, but we certainly wish them well in their next journey. Their time with the school division spans from four years to thirty-eight years, and we are very grateful for the many ways they each have served our students and our school community during their time here, and we wish them well as they leave us to embark on new experiences in retirement. So I will call all their names out and let you know how many years they've been here, and I do believe some of them are available to be here tonight. Uh, Jenny Mullins, thirty-eight years. Darlene Dawson, thirty-four years. Pamela Reagan-Bogan, thirty-three years. Jan Hypes, thirty-two years. Beth Kurtzman, thirty-one years. Lou Buzzy, thirty years. Pam Cove, thirty years. Pam Striver, thirty years. Kathleen Hessenzetta, twenty-nine years. Sandy Thompson, twenty-eight years. Mary Ann Bogart, twenty-five years. Vicki Knowlty, twenty-four years. Stacy Lawson, twenty-two years. Ruth Williams, twenty-two years. Carol Woodbeck, twenty-one years. Jeanette Schalk, twenty years. Jerry Gurs, seventeen years. Richard Mullins, seventeen years. Carol Varley, seventeen years. Dora Ovalier, sixteen years. Chong Hu Hawkins, fifteen years. Sandy Reynolds, fifteen years. Jenny Dwyer, fourteen years. Grace Taylor, thirteen years. Jeanette Williams, thirteen years. Deborah Krosick, twelve years. Shirley Mickens, eleven years. Fred Benavento, nine years. Bradley Holden, seven years. And Frances Payne, four years. All right. Well, that concludes our recognitions for tonight. Thank you.
All right, while all the fun people are leaving, not all the fun people. Boy, did I stick my foot in it there, didn't I? Board committee reports. Mr. Williams, anything on academics?
No reports.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Albrecht, anything on education support? Ms. Kiefer, policy?
Yes, sir. We will, um, be talking a little bit about the policies we're putting forward later in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Y'all notice that we always have policy? She works hard. Thank you very much, Ms. Kiefer. Uh, finance, Mr. Albrecht?
No reports, sir.
And personnel, Ms. Seberg?
No report.
We're rolling now. Uh, we'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Hanlon, we'll start with you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, congratulations to everybody honored tonight, especially the students who are up here. It's incredible the work they do with other students, that's just wonderful. Um, congratulations to all the staff recognized tonight, and especially congratulations to the retirees who have dedicated their careers to the City of Manassas schools. And tonight, especially, congratulations to all our graduates. We went to, we all went to graduation last night, and, um, I want to thank all the teachers who helped those students get there, especially the, um, thirteen years' worth of students who put up with my daughter as she went through the Manassas City School. So, uh, congratulations, Class of Twenty Seventeen. Outstanding bunch of kids, and, uh, I, the comments last night were great, everybody made it, and they really are a great bunch of kids. And I'm not just saying that because several of us up here have graduates in that class, they, they just were an outstanding bunch of kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Ms. Williams?
Well, at first I do want to congratulate every teacher, every staff member, every office, um, administrative, um, person, personnel. Um, if it wasn't for all of you getting all these awards tonight, um, helping with the band, the orchestra, the Eagle Writing Block, these kids would never really make it so successful the day they graduate. Once they graduate, they move on and do so many great things. We've got so many graduates right now just moving, starting day one, doing fantastic things. And if it wasn't for everybody, um, it wouldn't, I don't think we would see such fantastic graduates. Um, yesterday was a very exciting day. I did a lot, a couple of things yesterday. I was able to watch the eighth graders at Metz, uh, complete their walk to Osborne High School as they finished their middle school chapter, which I would title awkward. If you have middle school students or have had middle school students, for many reasons, that's, that's the title I would, um, title that particular chapter. They ended their walk with tons of foodie trucks, um, they signed yearbooks, and they, there was a lot of tears shed. Many will see each other next year through the summer, summer moving away, so that was really, um, nice and touching. Of course, the grand finale was the Osborne High School Class of Two Thousand Seventeen graduation. I would title this chapter, "Oh, What a Night." Um, again, for so many reasons, I'm so excited for each and every one of our graduates. The future is theirs to make. My hope is that someone, a teacher, a counselor, an administrator, a coach, other students right here in the Manassas City Public Schools, have encouraged each and every one of them in a way to spread their wings and soar once they graduate and are on their own. My prayer is for all those going into armed forces, may they excel and remain safe throughout their military careers, and I thank you for your strength, your protection, and love for America. Now go get 'em Eagles, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, lots of congratulations tonight, um, to the staff and the students that were recognized here for their, in the spotlight. Um, I thoroughly enjoyed the Metz Orchestra and Band Concerts throughout the year, this year, and, um, for the successes of the Eagle Writing Center, that's just phenomenal. I really, um, appreciate all the work that they're doing there and, um, have enjoyed the lounge. So, it sounds like that's going to continue. Um, this time of year brings many celebrations as we close everything out, and, uh, I just wanted to say congratulations especially to all the kings and queens of Two Thousand Seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you. Well, the, the bonus of having so many eloquent people go before you is there's little for you left to say by the time it gets around to you, but, um, I too wanted to congratulate folks. Um, school's out, so congratulations to our kids, congratulations to our parents, um, and to our staff. Um, one of the slides tonight for the Eagle Writing Block, um, presentation had three words on it, um, people, passion, and purpose. I don't know if anyone else noticed that, but I did. Um, and when I think about what we have here in Manassas City and all the folks that make this happen for our kids, um, way too many of you to name, but just know that we recognize all that you're doing, and we can see it in our kids. Um, I too've been able to both either see or see on Facebook the many awards ceremonies going on for our kids, for our staff, and it just, again, you know, we can, we can focus on the things we all know we're working really hard to improve in the system, but when you look at each face and the awards of these people, um, from the children on up, um, and the great things we're doing, I think we need to take time to celebrate that. For our Eagles, Class of Twenty Seventeen, we all survived the heat. Um, we enjoyed watching the faces of everybody just, uh, celebrating the success. Faith and Iris, congratulations to you both. You both will be missed. You have been such an asset to this, uh, team up here. Um, your opinions just matter so much. Um, your smiles matter even more, when sometimes it's hard to smile. Um, we just need to look down at the two of you, and, um, and you just make everything shine up here. Um, and I just also wanted to congratulate, there's a group of parents and community members who've been through our Parent Community Leadership Academy, um, and staff who've made that happen, um, above and beyond their duties of a day-to-day, um, and just wanted to congratulate that class for graduating and really coming out and spending their time learning more about, um, our schools and our city. Um, with that said, and I just wanted to again congratulate everybody tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I don't have much, but first of all, congratulations to all the honorees, uh, especially to me, retirees. They've put, many of them, a lot into our school system, and we're going to miss them. And they've earned their time to rest and, uh, not have a lot of students just every day coming to their classrooms and, uh, sometimes being rambunctious and sometimes listening, but, uh, they've done a lot for our community, so thank them all for their work. Um, most importantly, I'd like to congratulate all the graduates and their families. Uh, I was thinking last night, uh, as I was sitting down near the graduates, uh, a lot of times as we get older, we kind of take graduations for granted because as you get older, you're further removed from when you were there, but look, I know a lot of the kids who graduated and some of them I've known since they were very small, uh, looking at their faces and their eyes and being there, they were so excited and happy. And some of these kids, it's the first step to accomplishing many things, uh, in the education, uh, sector, and some of these kids, it's their terminal degree, um, they won't go back to school for formal education. To so many of the parents, um, who had kids who were first-generation graduates, this was a special time, so I think it's important for us to take the time to recognize and appreciate, um, the work and time and energy that went into it. Um, again, we can blase about it and take it for granted, but it really is a special occasion, and I was touched by, uh, the families and the students and their accomplishments, and even the teachers sitting down down with us, how, how much they were touched, touched by it, so congratulations to all of them. And I have to mention that, when I joined the board, we sit like down with the students, and generally, people at the primary, uh, who are very rambunctious, and Jackson Moore liked to sit in the aisle seat, because Peter and I had kids who were graduating, you know, we took the aisle seats, and I would thank Jackson Moore graciously moving, you know, down, he kind of wanted to sit in the aisle, but he let us sit in the aisles because we could see our kids. Uh, so I thank him for that. Uh, but again, congratulations to everyone, and, um, have a great time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just so you know, school board should have priority of where they'd like to sit, so it was nice of him to move.
Oh, yeah, I know that, so, that wasn't an option.
Okay, there you go. There you go. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me start off with, since the polls are closed, a thank you for anybody who voted today. I don't care which one of the primaries you voted on, thank you for voting. It's that right that makes us a great nation. We can argue with whatever, whoever gets elected and where they stand all we want, but it's our obligation, our right to vote, and that's what makes us a great country. So thank you for those of you who did. Mrs. Williams is right, June, it's, it's the end of a chapter, it's the end of the school year, all this stuff happens, and boy, it's been a whirlwind of things. Um, high school graduation last night, retirees, lots of things going on. It certainly though puts it in perspective, and when you see the student presentations this evening about what it's about. They're our future, so, looking at those graduates last night, looking at all the bling they had on and some of their plans and talking to them, I think we're in okay shape as a I did have the opportunity last week, on the eighth, uh, to represent the School Board Association with the Governor, Senator Matt Pike, Doug Cornfeller, in the signing of the anti-bullying bill. Not really a major bill per se, but I think it really speaks volumes of where the Commonwealth is and what we intend to do and where, um, we intend to hold people accountable with respect to doing what's right. Finally, I will not be at the next board meeting, there's a series of state hearings, I'll throw some dates out for anybody who happens to care. Uh, the State Board is holding public hearings so they can get public feedback on the expectations the Commonwealth has on our school system, on how schools are accredited, and intriguingly, how they're resourced, or maybe we should say how they're not resourced, because that seems to be the local government's responsibility. Uh, but the twenty-seventh of June, there'll be a hearing in Fairfax. The thirteenth of July, there'll be one down in With County, the eighteenth in Harrisonburg, the ninth of August in Virginia Beach, maybe some folks will be on vacation, get swung by a public hearing. Not my idea, fun, but maybe someone will want to do it. And the twenty-third down in Mecklenburg. So, um, the Commonwealth is seeking the input, so I will be going to several of these to represent the School Board Association and testify for what we, at least as a locality, would like to have.
Thank you, sir. What everybody else said, uh, congratulations to everybody that was mentioned. At graduation last night, um, these folks voted me in as chairman, so I got to sit on the stage. I had a very early morning this morning, uh, so, um, sometimes it's nice to linger around and chat with people afterwards. Uh, instead, I bolted out the back in a hurry. Um, yeah, nearly ran you down. Um, I thought about giving them a ride, but no, just get out of the way, I got to get home and go to bed. But as I was leaving, um, there was a group of people waiting for us to be done, and we congratulate everybody, and I sometimes focus on these folks, um, and that was our maintenance staff, and they're all standing back there waiting to pick up after us, waiting for all of us to clear out and let them go to work. And then they went to work today. To me, they're unsung heroes. Um, everybody else, we talk about them all the time, and rightfully so, but I'd just like to say thank you to our maintenance staff who do so much work here with so little people, and then they go clean up Jiffy Lube Live. So, I, I'm very impressed with them. Uh, something else that wasn't mentioned from graduation last night, and I'm not an aficionado by any stretch of the imagination, but the chorus last night, Mr. Williams can attest, I, I, I don't know how anything can be any better than what they were. It was absolutely spectacular, uh, so much so that from last night, Mia Williams got a, a, uh, video contract. Was that from last night?
No.
Oh, it wasn't, okay. I, I just thought it was from last night, but that's how good they are, and, and, and Mia sings with, with these kids, and she's not carrying anybody, and she's the one getting a recording contract, and the rest of them are spectacular. It is just unbelievable how good these kids are, and I, I was just completely thrilled with them. Um, and I got to say a few words last night, and, um, I said something about our girls, and, I don't know who was there or who saw it, but I meant every word. You, you two have been absolutely special to be up here with, and, um, as chairman, I'm going to give you an order, is to make sure you stay in touch with us. Uh, you, you have been a blessing to us and, and made us so much better, and I thank you so very much for everything you've both done. Uh, I really do appreciate it. Um, and, Mrs. Lawrence, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, okay, I'm a little nervous. So, um, so last night, after graduation, I took a deep breath and I was like, oh, finally it's over. By now, I get to rest. By now, I get to rest, have my summer, and then I was like, well, if I could choose one word to describe this experience and my senior year in high school, it would be thankful. Thankful for all the amazing opportunities, especially this one, all the amazing people I've met. I've never in my 13 years of education thought I'd get a chance to sit up here with like this school board that's amazing. Yeah. I've grown in so many ways. I can't even begin to explain how many ways academically, socially, professionally I've grown. I've gotten better at public speaking, which I was terrified of. Faith can attest to that. When we first started, I would, my hands would be all sweaty. And I just want to finish off by saying, always be thankful for people that motivate you. I'm thankful for my family. I'm thankful for you guys. You guys pushed me to try my best, be an exemplary student, you know. And I want to say thank you to Faith, who thanks to her I got, well, she told me about this position. She was kind of my rival for a while. We competed in class, you get the 100. I always beat her, though. But thanks to people like her, it pushed me to get this position. It pushed me to work harder. So just be thankful for the people that motivate you. I know sometimes it may seem like, oh, I just have to, uh, but no, it's for the best, I promise. So, thank you.
Thank you, dear. Ms. Baddett?
Thank you. So I have held this position for the last two years and going into it, I was like, my mom encouraged me to do it and she said, Faith, you're so outgoing and you're into all of this stuff. It's such a great position for you. And I was like, great, this is just something, it sounds cool and it'll look great in my college application. Like, that's the extra bonus, right? And I was like, well, of course, helping out the students is important as well. And I got here and I was very nervous and I was with Gabby then, it was last year, and we were both nervous together, so it was kind of a mess and we didn't really know what we were doing, but we have come a long way. I have come a long way with Iris and I'm so glad she's joined me because last year I said, I guess we were rivals in class. And I was like, Iris, you have to do it. You're so perfect for it. We could be up there together. But it's been so much more to me than I think I could have ever imagined when I first applied for this position. When I first applied, like I said, I just thought it was going to be something I was going to do, good more college application. And it actually has turned into something that I think I'm going to base my entire life around. I had no idea what I wanted to do before. Oh, I had a good idea, but it was nothing related to this. I thought I wanted to be a writer. I thought I wanted to be something completely different than I do now. And now I'm going to James Madison next year and I'm going to major in poli sci, mostly because of everything that I've taken away from this experience on this board. This experience has taught me so much. Before, I had no idea about anything about local politics or what it entailed, how it went about. And I have learned so much and because of this experience, I've gone on to go to states and to state politics and I wanted to learn more. And just because this experience has taught me so much and I found that I was so interested in, I am passionate about this stuff. So I'm so excited to go to college next year and to major in this subject about politics and hopefully to go to law school. I mean, who knows, I could get to college and be like, wow, this is actually not what I thought it was at all. But because I did this, I don't think that will be the case and I'm very glad that I can go to college. And I feel like I already have an upper hand on everyone that will be sitting around me on my classes. I've already had firsthand experience on what local politics is and what state politics is and that would just give me such an upper hand. And I can't thank you guys enough. And I know you guys say that we helped out a lot on all our comments, but really, this has helped shape what I hope to be, will be the rest of my life and a career in my life doing this. So thank you so much. It's been such an honor to serve on this board and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sweetie.
You do.
Ms. Seberg, Mr. Williams?
Well, Ms. Seberg told me a few minutes ago I'd be topping, so I'm going to do my best. We just wanted to let you know that we appreciate you both. Iris, I've known you for a few years and I really like to know you've been playing lacrosse with my daughter, went out there in the field, having fun. Meanwhile, you've been a great player. You're smart, you're talented, and I look forward to seeing what you're going to do. I'm proud of the progress you've made and the way you've become and I can't wait to see what you do next. Know that you do have it in you to excel. So you go to school novice, you do well, and I look forward to hearing from you and following your progress and seeing what you do going forward. But thank you for everything you've done. You've done a great job this year and I'm proud of you. And we have a card for you. Faith Matic, I meant, Faith Matic, I don't start. So my youngest daughter was in school. She started in Manassas City Schools in second grade. I would go to lunch every Friday and bring her lunch. And while I brought her lunch, all the students or her friends would sit with me. And some of them, Jack Spall, asked me to bring him pizza too, so I would. Faith was nice, she didn't ask me for food, but we talked, I think, every Friday, literally every Friday during the school year. And as she and my daughter, I became our best friends. And I've seen her go from an inquisitive young girl to someone who liked reading Thunberg and was going to be a writer, to someone who's evolved to what she is today. She's really part of our family, I love her. She's a great young woman. We vacation together and we're going to miss you next year when you go away to school. Emma and Brooke are going to miss you, her younger sisters. Leslie, David, your parents are going to miss you. They don't have a quiet house, so we'll be right back. They're going to miss you. You've done a great job, Faith. I enjoy watching her grow through the years. I'm really, really proud of her and you should be proud of her. You are smart. You are a great young woman and I just can't wait to see what you can do as well. Thank you for what you've done on the board, for being a great friend to me and my family. And you're outstanding, so thank you for your time and we wish you well and we have a card for each of them. And I'm going to give you a hug.
That's all for me. Okay. Let's just quit and go home now. Citizens' comments, I have no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak after that? Yeah, I wouldn't either. The consent agenda.
Mr. Chair of the School Board, the city of Manassas adopted the consent agenda as modified.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer to accept the consent agenda as modified. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. We'll move on to discussion agenda. Proposed name change to Tudor Lane. Mr. Hawkins?
Good evening, Mr. DiMaria, Vice Chairman Scott Albrecht, and Mr. Superintendent Dr. McGork. On the screen, I don't know if you can see it, maybe we can make it a little bigger, I'm not sure, but we've been approached by the city to consider changing the name of Tudor Lane in front of, the street address in front of Osborne from Tudor Lane to, you know, whatever the school board may decide. I'm here tonight to determine whether or not that is something that you would want to consider. The reason why this came up, we were approached by the city. We've had several citizens, a few citizens who were confused during the last special election that we had about where to vote. And it's all because of how Prince William Street and Tudor Lane is two Tudor Lanes. It's sort of, it's changed over the years and it's the reason, it was confusing to people on how to get to the voting site. But it's also a chance for us to create some civic pride, maybe for, in a small way, for the school division and to make it more personal to Manassas City Public Schools. And so, you guys talked to the registrar, I mean, the electoral board person today, Susan Reed, and she was very excited about this and wanted this to happen. She promised, or she told me today that she was going to write a letter of support for this, simply because she wants all of the citizens to not, to be able to vote quickly and easily without any confusion. So I just want you to consider tonight on whether or not you want to go down to this path or not. And if we do, if you do, we'll have to, I'm sure we'll have to develop some sort of process committee or to develop a list of possible choices. But if not, we will let it drop at that point. Now, the city, Pat Pate, the city manager, has offered to take this through whatever committees, commissions, whether it has to go to the planning commission or through the city council, you know, they put no restrictions on us whatsoever as far as what names we may choose, what path we may want to take. We can do nothing or we can change the name to whatever you would like. So I guess I'm just here tonight to present this and gain some consensus from the board on what you would like to do going forward.
Thank you, sir. For those of you who haven't been here for 1,000 years, Tudor Lane used to come right by those tennis courts and right out in front of Osborne and Baldwin. And that was shut off and now Tudor Lane goes that way and it's got a bunch of houses on it. And on our little spur of Tudor Lane, we just have our two schools. They're the only two on there. So that's why this would be a consideration. I do not believe, and I can't speak for everyone who is old, that we hold any real historic preference for Tudor Lane. My first thought was, you name it the Eagle Way. You know, we do things the Eagle Way, so you name it the Eagle Way. And, but I think personally, we ought to at least consider, do you like that? It's great being me.
I have the same idea. It must be kind of weird.
It must not be good if we're on the same page, sir. But I would like to turn this over to Mr. Albrecht and his committee to consider it, but then as policy states, if I'm correct, you know all these policy numbers? That we should, it is up to the school board to name facilities or things in the school system. This is not in the school system, but it sounds like the city is trying to turn it over to us if we would like to do such a thing. So I think we should still follow what we have in policy and I believe policy says we may set up a committee. So I think we ought to try and figure out who we want to have on this committee, you know, some young people, some old people, and see what would be a good name for that. Does that sound good to everybody or does anybody else have a comment on that or thoughts?
When I first saw this and I looked at the map, I thought to myself, why would we want to change the name? I didn't understand why. And then all I did was look at the map and I thought, oh, yeah, now I see why. We've got two Tudors and Prince Williams over here. I just had never paid attention to that myself. And I've seen some chatter, same thing, why spend money on changing the name of a street? But I think it's absolutely worth looking into and seeing what it all entails. That's my opinion. Or my thought.
I don't think the expense would be all that great.
No, I can't imagine.
It'd be little to none to the school division. I mean, the city has, I mean, they'd have to put up a new street sign and, I mean, we might have a little bit of letterhead or things like that we might have to change.
Which we print ourselves anyway.
That we print ourselves anyway. So I'm not, I don't think it would be a significant cost at all.
Yeah.
It's something we haven't thought of and it might be a great opportunity for us as well to identify that road as City Schools Road, whatever we decide on, or whatever the committee decides on, you know, come up with three names that would, that we could consider then. Does that sound good to you, sir?
I think it does. I mean...
Should we go through your committee or should we just get a committee together?
I think the policies, well, the policies talk about education support. It's, while it's a public street, it's not really a facility. I think that the framework and the policy is probably a pretty good structure to start from. We can take it to the committee, start having staff do the right staff work, start the foundation of getting a committee together, but reasonably fast. But the only answer to an unasked question is no. And I like your exact point, is this potentially is an opportunity. Now, there may be people in the community who are really, you know, who like the building we tore down that has some affiliation with Tudor Lane, I don't know.
Yeah. I haven't heard, so we'll explore that. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Policies, are we going with you, dear?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Kiefer?
So I just wanted to preface this by saying that first, thank you to both the staff, but also to the board members. I feel like many of us sit on multiple different committees and so we've all seen them many times and talked about it to the point that we're getting into the grammar and everything. So we're really invested in these policies, but I feel like presenting them tonight as it relates to various components of our policies, just so that the public knows it's gone through academic committee for those that are relevant to academics, personnel for those related to personnel, and then ultimately through our policy committee. So these have been looked at time and time again to the point that sometimes some of us who have been on some of those other ones get confused about why we're revisiting them. So that all being said, there's been a lot of due diligence going into looking at these. Furthermore, the Virginia School Board Association is generally the body we look to. They have legal people, they have folks watching the state-level changes and making these changes and recommending them to all of the school systems that are part of that association. So with that all being said, and Ms. Wingfield or Dr. McGork will correct me if I misrepresent anything here, everything we're putting forward for discussion tonight, which you've all had these policies given to prior to the meeting, really are being adopted based on what the SBA has recommended to us. Any modifications that are being made really were things that we either needed to just slightly tweak, I believe that's accurate, in our current policies or things that we found some replication elsewhere in policies that had been done before. Is that accurate? Everybody's cool with that? So with that being said, I guess I can open it up to the board members for any questions or comments or additional things related to these policies.
We think you got it covered.
Ooh, that's your first mistake.
I know it.
So with that being said, it will be on the consent agenda at the next board meeting for the board vote.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Student achievement, social studies, K-8 social studies, and K-12 fine arts resource adoption. Dr. Cramp?
I'm just going to move this. All right, good evening, Chairman DiMaria, Vice Chairman Albrecht, Superintendent Dr. McGork, and members of the board. I am pleased to be with you tonight to share with you both our process and our selections for the K-8 social studies and K-12 fine arts resource adoptions. We will begin tonight with our K-8 social studies resource adoption. The total estimated cost of this adoption is $301,542. The first step in our process was to establish a leadership team. The leadership team was comprised of a member from each school K through 8. In addition to the leadership team, there was a committee of 40 people from all schools K-8 as well as central office. The committee is represented on those two sides. We reviewed products from five different vendors in this process. The next step was for our leadership team to establish an evaluation rubric for the initial review of the resources and the criteria are listed there. Rubrics were completed by committee members and resources with the most strongly recommended and recommended votes on the rubrics were invited to present their products in person to the committee. Community feedback was welcomed from March 6th through April 6th. We did receive one email, but it was a question about the process and not necessarily feedback about any of the adoptions. Vendor presentations took place on February 16th, March 22nd, and March 31st. After vendor presentations, committee members voted again on which resource was preferred for adoption. Division-level committee members reconvened to tally the final votes from teachers and a combination of traditional textbooks and digital resources are included. Votes for the considered resources are shown on the chart. The selection for K through 3 is Five Ponds. Grade 4 is McGraw-Hill. Grades 5 and 6, Pearson. Grade 7, TCI. And grade 8, McGraw-Hill. As you can see, we did have a tie at 8th grade. We had some further discussions with all social studies teachers at Metz and again, compared the resources and all agreed to move forward with the McGraw-Hill for grade 8. An overview of the entire adoption process as well as all the selections were shared with all staff K through 8 at grade level and team meetings. with all staff K through eight at grade level and team meetings. But as we said, K-3 selected Five Ponds. A digital subscription comes with each textbook and additional digital subscriptions will be purchased so that each student has one. The value in digital resources is they are updated continually and we will have access to all of those updates as they happen. Also, students can have access both at school through our devices and at home through devices they may have there. Textbooks recommended are at the following ratios in kindergarten, approximately fifty textbooks per school, Grade One, approximately ten textbooks per classroom, and Grades Two and Three are approximately one book for every two students. These, um, numbers were determined through conversations with teachers because not necessarily in every grade level does every student need a text, because again, it's a combination of text, digital resources that can be displayed for the class, as well as students being on devices to review digital resources. And combinations of all of those are used regularly within the classrooms. The total estimated cost of the K-3 adoption is seventy-eight thousand five hundred sixty. Grade Four selected McGraw-Hill. Grade Four has a different resource than K-3 because in Grade Four, we do Virginia Studies and typically, resource companies tailor a particular product specifically to Virginia Studies, separate from K-3 general social studies. Again, a digital subscription comes with each textbook and additional subscriptions will be purchased so that each student has one. Textbooks recommended in Grade Four are at a ratio of one for every two students and the total estimated cost of the fourth grade adoption is thirty-six thousand four hundred. Grades Five and Six selected Pearson, again, in keeping with the theme, a digital subscription comes with each textbook and, um, each student here will actually receive a text, it is a consumable text and we will receive that text annually, um, over the course of the next six years. We do not need to pay for that annually, it's just one-time upfront cost and we will receive those books for each student every year. The total estimated cost of the Five-Six adoption is ninety-five thousand seven hundred Grade Seven selected TCI, digital subscription with every textbook, additional subscriptions will be purchased so each student has one. Textbooks recommended, um, are at a ratio of one class set of thirty books for each teacher. And again, those will be used with every class that rotates, uh, to that teacher throughout the day. The total estimated cost of the seventh grade adoption is forty-four thousand two hundred fifty. And Grade Eight selected McGraw-Hill, again, digital subscription with each textbook and additional subscriptions purchased so that every student has one. Same ratio as Grade Seven with a class set of thirty books for each teacher and the total estimated cost of the eighth grade adoption is forty-six thousand six hundred ten. And then just a reminder that the total estimated cost for the K-8 social studies adoption is three hundred one thousand five hundred forty-two. Now we will move in and talk about the K-12 fine arts.
Can you hold on one second?
Sure.
Does anybody have questions on that?
Sure.
Uh, before we get too far away from it?
I, I just have one on consumable licenses. Because we have a porous student population, students come and students go. And I'm assuming like when someone gives you three hundred and twenty, three hundred and fifty concurrent users, then we're assigning a seat per student that's, that's, um, registered in the school system. And I wonder what the consumable one is, so if a lot of students happen to leave and new students come in, you've already consumed that license, what's the licensing implication?
It's actually per seat, so students leave, we can assign that to a new student when they come in.
Even though it's consumable, it can be assigned?
Correct.
Okay.
Good question.
Anyone else?
I don't know what to say, but I'll jump in now.
Okay.
I've seen this many, many times. Um, thank you for doing a great job with the presentation. That community had lots of questions and I went back and forth and, uh, talked them about it. And one question, concern that I had initially was, why are we using a plethora of resources instead of just using one finger? But I think that the community did an excellent job in looking at the teachers and trying to discern what works best for each group. And I like the fact that we're trying to tailor what's best for each grade as opposed to just uniformly going one way. So I commend them for looking at different options and trying to glean the best option for everybody as opposed to just doing one thing and going forward. So thank you for that.
Sure. Anyone else? Um, on the disposable one for the fifth and sixth grade, or whatever, is there digital on that as well?
Yes, every book can, uh, contains a digital subscription as well. The book just happens to be a little more interactive, it is like a textbook, but there's activities and things students complete in paper, but also a digital subscription attached as well.
Okay, good. Continue.
Okay. Uh, the K-12 fine arts resource adoption, uh, the total estimated cost for this adoption is ninety-one thousand one hundred forty-five and this adoption includes both performing and visual arts. Similar to social studies, the first step in the process was to form a leadership team. And in addition to the leadership team, a committee of teachers was formed and there are representatives from all schools on both performing and visual arts committees. The team worked together to establish an evaluation rubric. And you can see the criteria that they have created. On this side and the next is a description of the different resources considered and some of what they provide, students and teachers. Uh, this slide shows the resources reviewed for performing arts. You will see in future slides, um, that we've recommended multiple resources and that's because they offer different things to different groups. So just wanted to provide you with a little bit of explanation about each of the resources so you can see how they may be alike, but also how they're different and what they may provide. And this slide represents the resources reviewed for visual arts. Community feedback was welcome, um, from March 22nd through April 28th and we did not receive any feedback. Vendor presentations for fine arts was actually not necessary in person, um, all resources are online and teachers were actually given logins and access to the resources and were able to experiment with them for several months within their classrooms. So, um, again, there wasn't a need to have vendor presentations per se. And January through April, the committee corresponded digitally about the resources back and forth through a Google Doc, a living conversation. And following several months of online practice and correspondence, um, the committee's completed rubrics and votes were tallied. Recommendations, um, for each category are highlighted for you in yellow. And just a reminder, on slide twenty-five and twenty-six, um, you can get that summary of the different, um, offerings that each resource provides. And selected resources were shared with all staff through team or individual meetings. The total estimated cost for performing arts, uh, for the adoption is sixty-two thousand seven hundred five. There is an annual cost with this adoption, as you can see represented there, it's twenty-eight thousand nine hundred five dollars and we will incorporate that into the curriculum and instruction budget annually. The total adoption cost for visual arts is twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty. Um, teachers will be using digital images from Davis Art and I realize you can go to Google and get lots of images, but these are vetted and they're searchable by artist, technique, color, lots of different things that our arts teachers, um, would want to compile for our students. And again, the total for fine arts is ninety-one thousand one hundred forty-five. In the seventeen and eighteen approved budget, uh, we have four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars allocated for the purchase of these new adoptions. The total for both adoptions comes to three hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred eighty-seven. That leaves us a little bit of additional funding that we'll use for other expenses throughout the year. And the timeline for the submission of these recommendations is noted on this slide. Uh, we have our selected resources available again and out for community review. The window has been open since June 2nd. So far, we have not had any feedback for social studies, but we did have one community member review music first and gave positive remarks. A feedback on both resource adoptions will be received through June 23rd, so I encourage our community to provide any feedback they would like. Uh, these will be back on the consent agenda at the last meeting in June and I thank you so much for your time, it's been my pleasure to share these adoptions with you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on this one?
If you could, thank you again, that's what I brought with me yesterday. Again, we reviewed this a couple of times and I think you did a good job. Would you mind just, uh, at least mentioning folks here who had a part in the adoption, say a couple of them?
Yes, I will. Um, I meant to do that at the beginning, so thank you for reminding me. With me tonight is Melissa Neal, she's our K-12 social studies content specialist and she, along with Mrs. Hart, our coordinator of GT, fine arts, world languages, and several other things, um, really led this process and, um, I just thank them for their time and effort and working with all the different committees and going back to the teachers and sharing information after the, the, um, recommendations came in and certainly their work is integral to doing what, what we do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Um, oh, sir.
Just one question. This is, Mr. Hawkins, this is budgeted in the seventeen, eighteen budget?
Yes, sir.
One of the textbooks needed by, they need it for the fall semester?
They are, and we've actually been in contact with all of our vendors to let them know our timeline and they have assured me we will have materials in August.
Thank you.
So the plan, just so you know, is to...
It can't be by until July 1st.
That's correct, we're ready.
We're going to write the purchase order on July the 5th and we, we've been assured by the vendor will happen before school starts, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And, uh, Mr. Williams? I'd like to thank you and your committee. Um, just so everybody knows, this is not the first time we've seen this, let alone the first time the, uh, academics committee has seen this and, uh, so right now we're putting it on camera, making sure everybody out there can see it, uh, but we've been, well, I haven't been, but the committee has been working on this for quite a while, I assume. And I just want to thank you and your committee for doing that.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And if no one has anything else, we have a closed session.
Mr. Chair of the School Board, the City Menasses, enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings as allowed by section 2.2, 3711, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purpose, discussion of personnel matters.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Let the school board enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2 dash 3711, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purpose, discussion of personnel matters. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Thank you all.